Good evening. Tonight is the 15th of October and welcome to our meeting of the Norwood Board of Selectmen. Tonight we have several meetings with department heads, but before we start, let us have a pledge allegiance to the flag as usual followed by a silent moment of prayer or meditation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all and please be seated. Tonight we will start with our first department head meeting with Mr. Mark Ryan, DPW/Town Engineer. Good evening, Mr. Ryan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have my report in front of you. I'll just touch on some of the things I think are notable, maybe even around town seeing all the pavement markings on the roadways being done. We're just about done with that, all the crosswalks, center lines and edge lines, so that went pretty well. Public Works has been actively aerating, fertilizing and seeding the athletic fields. Perfect time of the year to do it. We also spent a lot of time in some of the park areas, especially noted the Hawes Pool area, which is coming along very nicely. A few years ago, we cleared it out some more and created more green space there, so it's looking very well there. Throughout the center of town, we have the autumn banners are up to welcome autumn in and also Chip Nickerson from Highway and Parks has been decorating some of the street corners and traffic islands and he's done a wonderful job there. Public Works, at the end of September, you know, it's the October report, we worked in concert with the water health for the hazardous waste day at the landfill and that once again was very successful and a shout out to Sigal Reese and her staff for doing a great job there. Public Works is overseeing the water main cleaning and lining project up on Prospect Street, Fulton, Leyden, Summit, Curran and High Street. It's moving along pretty well. We've been making some great progress and we're looking for a completion date in mid-November. Sewer Department is always active with their regular daily workload, but they're also overseeing the sewer main cleaning and lining project as well. That's coming to a conclusion probably the end of November. The cemetery department, very busy, you know, with its normal workload maintaining two cemeteries. They did conduct 17 interments and today we have 172 interments. We stone sealed 5,100 feet of roadway up there. This is the third year of a three-year project and Mr. Ren Ali and his staff, a big shout out to them because they did a lot of work in house prep in those roads, so it really came out very nice. And on October 6th, the cemetery chapel hosted the concerts in the chapel and Patty Fanning was a big part of that as well as others and that went very well. And the engineering department's been overseeing the annual resurfacing project. We're making great progress. As you know, we've done Follin Ave, Fulton Street, portion of Washington Street, Chapel down to Allendale Parkway, Cottage Street, Prospect Street, St. Catherine Street, Fails Ave, Carpenter Street, Pine Street, Edge Hill Road and Glendale Road and tomorrow we'll be finishing up the Glendale, Edge Hill area and then Meadow Street. At the same time, we're working on Rock Street. We finished the concrete sidewalks there, so the next round of streets for paving will be Rock Street, portion of Manhattan Street in front of the police and fire station, Broadway and East Hoyle. And we also met with the contractor today to do the intersection over Atlantic Street and Manhattan Streets, so that'll be coming very shortly and that work was the benefit of the donation made by Avalon Companies. So that, Mr. Chairman, open up any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Mr. Hajar?
Yes, thanks, Mark, for your report. Just a couple of questions. On the highways and parks, we say sign could replace, repeated 19 signs. Are we talking like speed signs, stop signs, no parking signs, or is it something more detailed than that?
All the above.
Okay.
It could be pedestrian crossing signs, some of them get knocked over, some get faded, but we've added quite a few as well.
Okay. When you say tree trimming, trimming street trees throughout Norwood, are these properly requested or are these all just pre-planned activities that you normally do on certain streets as you see them overgrown?
Right, so these are street trees. We start off in Norwood Center and going down, you know, near the train station on Central Street and we'll just keep going around, but these are all public trees on the town right away.
Okay, thank you. Kudos on hazardous waste day. I know Sigal submitted a letter and she's the forefront of it all, but it takes more than one department to do it. I've never heard a negative word about either the hazardous waste days that this town runs. It's very well received and thank you very, very much. 19 water me is replaced, planned or indiscriminate?
They are planned. They've reached their life expectancy. We're upgrading to, you know, to work with our new meter transmission units, the MTUs, the automatic readers, so a lot of these ones are outdated, so we're replacing those.
Okay. The weekly samples of the water system were taken and delivered to the MWRA. Is this an annual task that's...
Weekly.
So you do it throughout the entire year?
Yes.
And what are you expecting from the MWRA? They test a sample to determine what, lead content if there's any or...
Yeah, lead's not an issue around here, Mr. Hajar, but it's just the water quality, how it's, you know, we check for color form obviously, which would mean that something is wrong with the system, but it's a requirement of the MWRA. We take the samples, bring them in, they test it and then they report back to us.
Okay. Under the sewer and drain, there were four sewer service and two sewer main blockages cleared. Were the four sewer services private property or they found in the street?
Those are private properties, so those are calling.
The numbers for the cemetery, are those fiscal year-to-date numbers?
Those are year-to-date, so those are...
Calendar year or fiscal year?
This is calendar year.
Okay. Just a suggestion you might want to, so that we're consistent with the numbers that we've been reporting, as you know, throughout the year, you might want to just show the fiscal year for that month and then the year-to-date for the fiscal years because that is how we've been tracking so that we can determine, again, when we go back to talking about any potential rate increases, part of it depends on what's going on in there, so I just appreciate that. Otherwise, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Glasgow.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan, I was going to ask you, you already mentioned the intersection Atlantic and Manhattan. Is there a chance of that happening this year or is that next spring?
Absolutely. It's going to start up within, next week we hope, to start the work there, yes.
Okay, great. The Gerald Miller Athletic Complex.
Mm-hmm.
There's two footings of some type in the ground. There's been a hole dug and wood frame put in them. Do you know what those are for?
Yes, we're pouring concrete foundations for the bike pad up there is one of them, the others for trash barrels.
Okay, thank you. I was afraid that somebody might be putting some kind of dedications up, which may be well-intended and appropriate, but I thought that make sure that the selectmen and the other school committee knew before anything permanent was installed like that. Thank you.
That's everything. Thank you, Mr. Glasgow. Mr. Maloney?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Ryan, thank you again for your report. By the concerts in the chapel, by the way, on October 6th featured three harp soloists led by Dr. Lazari Rodriguez, now, and two of her students. The two students were teenagers, so I don't know if anyone else... I don't know anything about the harp, but it sounded pretty good to me and the acoustics in that place are really good. You don't have to play loud to get good sound out of there. So there's another concert, is it November 10?
November 10, yes.
Okay, and that's a guitar guitarist?
Yes, that's right. If you go on the website, there is the notice about it describing who the person is, but you're right, it went very well and November 10th is the next one.
It was filled, every seat was filled. Patty Fanning was running with John Grove and Tom Lambert was there. Every seat was filled, it was really good. Anyway, it's a great idea, glad to see the chapel getting used. Just on roads, Mr. Mizuka, we talked about this, we did get some supplemental Chapter 90 money, is that true?
Well, it's in the governor's budget, the close-up budget, additional Chapter 90. We don't know when we'll actually see it.
Okay, that's right, we talked about it.
But what I'd like what we do is probably next spring, an additional road or two we'll be able to get done.
Okay, very good. Last question for me, and I know, I think we talked about it last time though, is the status of the parking lot project. Do we have any update on that?
The plans are about 90% done. I would like to come in front of the board, probably not next week, but the week after, and show it to the board each of the lots and get their input on it and hopefully the blessing to move forward with it. It's probably a spring project, well, it's definitely going to be a spring project.
Yeah, we get it designed and everything. There is some equipment out there at the back end of the Talbot parking lot. I had one neighbor call and just...
That is mostly, that is our contractor for roadwork being done in the area.
Okay, so it has to stay there?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Mr. Ryan, I have a memorandum here from your department about REETS Across America. Would you like to quickly explain that to people?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last year, we were approached by Andrea Reed. She's a Norwood resident and works for Connel Lab down on Edgewater Drive and she wanted to include Highland Cemetery and Old Parish Cemetery in the annual event of REETS Across America. And that, we came before the board and with your blessing, we held that event and it was pretty successful for the first time and essentially it allows people to donate REETS to wherever cemetery they want to honor veterans during December. This year it's held December 14th and it's quite an event. In your package, I included the agenda for the day. We had a few speakers up there including our own Ted Mulverhill and it's really a nice touch during a time of year where, you know, some graves just aren't visited anymore, Mr. Chairman, just because, you know, the families have moved on and so people are, if they go to, and this information will be on our website if approved, reetsacrossamerica.org and you can donate a REET, $15 and it's delivered to the cemetery and they can either put it in a specific location if requested by the person donating it or it can be left up to all the volunteers that'll be there December 14th.
Thank you. And as the logo reads, REETS Across America, there's three things here to remember. Number one is to remember to honor the ones that gave so much. But lastly, and I think more importantly, is to teach our young children exactly what this all means and who gave what.
All the sacrifices, exactly, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that. I was in Bourne National Cemetery last year when we had this happen and it's very impressive down there also, on a bigger scale. Lastly, yesterday was...
Can I ask one question to expand on that? Someone's making a donation, who did they make their donation out to?
So there's a website and you would just pay online to the website. We can't take cash or anything and they record how many donated to each facility and then they would have them made and then delivered, so it's all on the website.
Basically the national organization?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
And with that, you know, at some point if we can get the blessing, we can start moving forward with promoting this and putting it on the website, Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to form a vote from us this evening?
That'd be great, yes, please.
Would anybody like to give me a motion on that to support this?
So move.
And I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing unanimous, you're all set with that. Lastly, if I could, yesterday was a holiday, so trash pickup has been delayed by one day. For instance, mine should have been picked up yesterday, it got picked up today and so on and so on, all the way through to Saturday.
Correct, correct, so...
Just to let people know.
I get picked up on Friday, so now we're Saturday, so delayed a day all week, trash and recycling.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
And thank you for everything.
Okay.
So with that said, have a good evening.
Thank you, you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Second meeting this evening scheduled for 7:15 and we have to be right on time is with Mr. James Collins of the Light Department. He is the superintendent, the two of his number twos with him also. Mr. Collins, it's all on you. What's that?
I want to...
Oh, I'm sorry. My colleague here on the end of the table, Mr. Zhao, would like to make a declaration if he could.
So when I became Boris Selectman, since that time, I've received a couple inquiries from residents of the town about a potential conflict of interest that I may have because of my 32 years with Verizon. So I did speak to the Ethics Office today and got a ruling that because my 32 years were all on the real estate side, and I know it says Verizon Communications, but if you take away the post office, Verizon is the largest real estate holder in America. Had nothing to do with regulatory or any of the rate schedules that came before this body or any other body across Massachusetts or anywhere. So just wanted to assure the board and you folks that I received no finances from Verizon. I took all my money with me when I retired, except for some concession service, that's it. And the attorney for the Ethics Commission determined that there is no conflict. I filed the proper forms with the clerk's office this afternoon, but just wanted to say that publicly for that reason.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And tonight with you, to your right, you have Mr. Shaughnessy and Mr. Morrissey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to run through the report briefly, then I'm going to have Dan speak about a couple of the issues and Kevin speak on with respect to the RFP with the family. Danny's going to talk about the transmission project and the computer project, Munis. Asset Road is coming along very well. The progress report and the faculty report, about 83 or 84% complete and no major delays and it's on target budget-wise. I also have in your package tonight a standard, Marvellous standard, engineering and technical standard for our poll that I'd like if possible to be approved. And we're updating our terms and conditions as we go to the new billing system. We had to change them anyway because they won't fit on the new bills and so we updated them to current standard we hadn't reviewed and this is what I recommend that you approve. In addition to that, I know you've been doing a number of things for the green community. There's one letter here that I'd like you to endorse if possible for green communities that allows us to become a member if it's possible to forge it and, you know, that we have some peripheral customers, if the board changes on that, then that would be helpful. With that, Dan, if you want to talk about the transmission?
So the 115 transmission line project to put us on the new EverSource line for 447-502, it actually started today. We're doing some work down at the Dean Street substation, so we're presently on one line coming into town. We'll be on one line till tomorrow afternoon and then we'll have the second line put back. On October 28th, we'll actually be switching to one line again on the other side and that's when we'll actually get connected up to the new transmission line, 447-502. That outage is for quite a period of time, that's about three to four weeks. That includes connecting up to the new line as well as all the testing, relay installations. It's considerable amount of work in a short period of time, but by Thanksgiving, we should be on the new line. Basically what that allows us to do is on the transmission towers, presently we're on each side of one transmission tower. Under the new arrangement, we'll be on the far side of two separate transmission towers, so it just spreads out our transmission lines that come into town a little wider, a little more space and doesn't put us on one particular tower at any time.
What are these changes or interruptions made for our customers?
It should mean no, it should mean absolutely nothing for our customers. So we're switching over to one line, if one line is fully capable of carrying the entire town, it has in the past. We try to keep those outages as short as possible because we, obviously, from a reliability standpoint, being on one line is not a great situation. Unfortunately, in order to do the work, we have to do that. We only have the two lines, so to do work on one of them, you have to be on the other. Did you want me to go right into the Munis or...
Go Munis, sure.
The Munis, as part of the Munis project, we're doing the utility billing, so we're changing our billing system. We're working presently this week, Tyler Technologies is on site doing some work. We have some, a few issues that we need to iron out, calculations with the bills that aren't calculating correctly. Most of it's correct, about 80% of it, but the other 20%, we still need to get rectified. We also need to get the bills finalized, the new bill layout finalized. We don't presently have any samples because obviously we'd like to show it not only to the board, but to the general public and send some information out so that they understand, so the public will understand what the new bills are going to look like.
Is this going to happen in December or so?
Honestly, I don't think so. I don't think we're ready. I think it's going to be better to push it back a little bit. I know with the town, on the financials, they're still ironing out some issues with it. On the utility billing, we're not going to be given that opportunity. If it's not right the first time, we can't send the bills out, we're on for a couple of months. We just can't do that. So we have to have that perfect. So right now, an estimate would be probably February or March is my guess. We have to fix some of the issues we have.
Thank you.
Get it right, get it right. Makes sense.
One of the things on our project you'll see is the landfill solar battery and the general solar battery. Kevin's been working on an RFP with a consultant.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you probably recall, about this time last year, we came before you requesting use of the landfill for a solar project. We tried to really go quickly to get it sited and get it going because we wanted to get credits that were available, but, you know, before the end of the year, it didn't work out. We just didn't have time, so we regrouped, we started thinking about more than just solar, we started thinking about an energy storage system, which, battery energy storage, which in the industry, it's B-E-S-S. So we decided that we didn't really have the wherewithal or the technical, you know, background to go out for an RFP on our own. So we hired a company, Celtic Energy, to help us and we've been working with them now for probably, I would say probably four months or five months. Our team, you know, everyone here and Jason and our new engineer, Colin, have been going back and forth. We think we can do the solar pretty quickly, pretty easily, but we want to do this other part. We may not do it because we'd have to come before you and ask if, we're not sure, you know, how we're going to finance it, if it's possible, if it's going to be another purchase power agreement. We think the solar probably will just be a purchase power agreement and we won't be looking for any capital, but on the battery side or the storage side, we may, depending on how it works. So that being said, we're pretty close. We're going to probably get it to Kathy's office, Kathy Carney, the purchasing agent or coordinator, probably this week and then we'll see how quickly we can turn it around. From there, we'll narrow it down like we always do. Down a...
... depending on who comes forward.
Right. I haven't already marked it up the way Mr. Haja has, but I was ready to ask for the same thing.
We had the standard developed by an engineering firm. They were developed by a company called CTC. We shared the cost of that study, of that development with Blueberry, Braintree, and Littleton, who all have fiber. So we all had that common interest. We split the cost straight four ways for that engineering.
So this is something, not that I want to make a motion here, but this is something I think we have to have further conversation about, further on down the line. So with that said...
All right, so just so we understand, Mr. Chairman, at some point, you want us to approve guidelines like this, or this is a draft of guidelines we want approved. We want to get it done expeditiously, but there's no urgency at the moment.
Correct.
Is that fair to say? Okay, so that gives, that gives us time to do our own individual...
Do you want to do it two weeks, or do you want to wait till then back in a month?
I'd recommend two weeks if you can do it, because what you don't want is an application to come in and then the clock is really ticking, and we've already seen some interest in doing these, and then we have nothing. So, you're right, we don't have to rush it, but if two weeks is enough time to have you guys meet and have any concerns you have...
Is that enough? Mr. Haja, is that okay with you, Mr. Vasco? It's fine by me.
Yeah, it sounds fair. Make a motion on the table for about two weeks.
And I think in those two weeks, we have a responsibility as individuals here on the side of the table, to read everything.
Well, there's nothing to say that we can't, you know, this is not in concrete. There's nothing to say that we can't amend meetings once more points we formulate them all.
Okay, have a motion to put it off for two weeks. Do I have a second on that motion?
Yes, I do.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Honesty.
Thank you.
Morrissey, take it both.
I'm way behind, Mr. Chairman.
Last week, we have this evening's appointment, Mr. Travis Folley, Superintendent of Recreation Department, giving his monthly report. Sir?
Members of the board, thank you for letting me come in and brief you on what's been happening in the rec world and what we have upcoming. I appreciate the time.
How was hocus pocus?
Oh, man. Unfortunately, we did not play hocus pocus. We played a different movie. Unfortunately, we couldn't have another common we had to have at the Civic, which we still had probably twenty families come to on Saturday night. So it was a good turnout.
What was the movie?
Inside Out, I think it was. Not so much a Halloween movie, but a failure movie. So, it was good, though. Good weekend all around.
Okay.
I'll kind of dive into the report and hit on some of the key items as well. Our fall programs did start in early September, and their first fall session wraps up on November 1st. We had, we have about a close to a thousand participants in this session alone, an improvement off seven forty-one from the year prior, so we did have a good uptick in participation. Our school of dance continues to be successful under Erica Malinowski. We have about one hundred and sixty dancers in this season's dance program, which continues to be successful. We are wrapping up our fall session at the end of October. We're starting a whole new one on Monday, November 4th. That runs till about Christmas. So if there's any, if you've missed this session of fall programs and you want to sign up again, we are running another course on Monday, November 4th. That's when our next session of programs start. So there's still time to sign up for the next session as well. We do have some fun one-day-hit programs coming up, so just programs that are low commitment. You can show up, just pay the fee, and you can be on your way. We have a fun dino party coming up on Monday, November 4th. We have a home alone safety course for teenagers on November 8th. We have a craft kids and seniors program on Thursday, November 14th. And then we have a parent's night out on Friday, December 6th. So if you want any more information on these programs, just have us, give us a buzz. I'm happy to explain the details. One thing we have coming up is the extravaganza on Saturday, November 30th. That's kind of a staple for us. That is a partnership with the Friends of Norwood Center. We're gonna be holding that on Small Business Saturday again this year. It should be a fun day. Thank you to TD Bank and Norwood Bank, who are big sponsors for that. We'll have caroling on the gazebo. We'll have Mr. and Mrs. Claus come on the fire truck, and we'll have crafts and a petting zoo at the Civic, so it should be a fun day. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate. And we do have birthday parties again this year, when we start opening up on Saturdays, which our first Saturday open for the season is this Saturday, the nineteenth. So we'll be open from nine AM till five in the afternoon, and we are gonna start doing birthday parties again this year. So if you're looking to have a birthday party at the Civic, we are gonna have them again this year on Saturdays. And our floor hockey program, it's hard to believe, but this program is starting its forty-ninth year, is one of our longest-running programs. It should be another fun year. Looking forward to that as well. And just a reminder for the general public about Bond Street, on, from Monday, October 21st to Friday, November 8th, we are gonna be closing that program, sorry, that playground as part of the CBC Project, Community Preservation Committee. We are gonna be putting poor rubber in there if the weather cooperates. Hopefully, it will. So that program, that playground will be closed for three weeks. The bleachers should be in hopefully within the month of the Civic Center. Right now, we have a beautiful new floor, and we're just waiting to get those bleachers in. They're at the manufacturer right now. One thing that I didn't put on the report, that I kind of have to hit on, but when I did the report late last week, I wasn't sure how the weekend was gonna go with the weather. But the Fall Fest that we just held, that had, held this weekend, kicked off with a sock hop on Thursday, which was like an elementary school dance that we had. We had a middle school dance on Friday night with about two hundred kids come, two hundred middle schoolers come, so that was a great turnout. Saturday, we had Truck or Treat, Midday, a little bit of a drizzle, but we had a great turnout. Thank you, Norwood Light, Fire, and Police for coming as well. And we had a Boo Brew at the Castle Island as well, which was a cornhole tournament, and they had some snacks and whatnot. That was a great turnout as well. And then we capped it off with a movie at the Civic that we were hoping to do in the common, but unfortunately, we had to move it on, move it in the Civic because of the weather. And then it capped off on Sunday with the pumpkin float. We had, Katie Seastead deserves a lot of the credit for putting this all together. These are events that we normally do throughout the month, but she had the good idea to put it all together and run a fun Fall Fest. Kudos to our part-time staff that helped us put together... Uh, kudos to our, um, part-time staff that helped us put together. It was kind of an all-hands-on-deck event. We couldn't have done it without them. Uh, and a big thank you to Mark Ryan and the DPW and Police and Fire for helping us as well. We couldn't have done it without them. And then, uh, last but not least, I'd like to say congratulations to Howard Weinstein. Uh, our rec administrator took the Certified Park and Rec Professional Exam, uh, late last week, and he passed it. So we're happy to report that Howie Weinstein is a Certified Park and Rec Professional. So watch out, Norwood. Um, so that was kind of my monthly report.
Thank you. Questions for the board?
Question here.
Mr. Folley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just on, on the, the bleachers are coming in soon. Can, can I just say, do we, do we have a cost on that?
I'd have to look. I think it was around 25,000.
Okay.
And it was.
Was that in our budget or in the?
Yes.
Incidents?
Uh, it was under our building repair, under our operating.
Okay, all right, very good. So three to four weeks they'll be in?
Three to four weeks, should be in, yep.
Because the, we talked about it last week, the floor looks great.
Floor looks great. It was, like I said, it was about 20 years before we'd sanded it down all the way to the wood. And it's hard to believe that the color you see right now was the original color of the wood. It's, it's unbelievable, um, how it looks now, and hopefully, we're going to be refurbishing it every year. Um, so it look, continues to look that way as well. And with the new bleachers and the LED lights, it'll look, it'll look good for years to come.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anything else for the board?
I have one more thing.
Go for it.
Sorry. Uh, I did include a cricket packet. Um, this is something we're working with Mr. Mizuko and Mr. Ryan on. Um, so during my brief time with the department, we've seen, uh, the sport of cricket grow in popularity. We went from probably one or two groups a number of years ago to, we're up to about four now in, in Norwood. Four different cricket groups. We're actually running a cricket program, um, at Lower Coakley on Saturday mornings. And we've had multiple groups that use the Lower Cleveland, uh, Willett, uh, Wilson. So we, we definitely see the need and the popularity for cricket in Norwood. Um, with that being said, um, we've kind of poked around at looking at multiple, multi-use facilities for maybe a cricket baseball field. And the one that we kind of found would be the best-fit size and use-wise was the Lower Coakley. Um, so if you take a look at the packet that I included, um, actually, the first one, I thought, because I'm more of a visual person as well, if you look at City Field, they actually already do this where the Mets play. Um, the cricket pitch is about 65 feet long.
66.
66, sorry, and about 10 feet wide. You got me. Um, and, uh, so the, the Mets actually held cricket matches there. Um, the pitch itself is, goes right in center field. Um, and then the map that Mr. Ryan drew is kind of a good perspective of where it's actually going to go. Um, it's not going to be a ton of money. Uh, we can do it in this year's operating. We can actually do it in the fall, um, and have it ready to go for the spring. Um, and then the cricket groups can hopefully use that field for their cricket area. Um, and it should be, and there, and we've talked to a few groups about it already, and they're ecstatic about it, and they're excited about it. Um, we would encourage groups to still go through the normal, uh, field reservation process in the spring if we can get it done. Um, I was just looking for the board's support, um, in doing this. And baseball will still be able to use the field, no problems. Um, it's just basically an addition of a cricket pitch on a baseball field.
But the cricket pitch is what, dirt?
Dirt, essentially. It's the same material as the infield.
So it's a, it's a, like a, a 600-square-foot rectangular piece of dirt in the middle of center field?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And is it, is it the same season?
Uh, they do fall and spring. It's very similar to baseball. Uh, it would be.
How, is anyone going to interrupt with the?
So the, the primary, we have a couple rental groups, um, and a couple of youth groups that do use Lower Coakley, but they're primarily in the, um, mid to late afternoon. Uh, they kind of start at 11 or 12, whereas cricket, they like to use Saturday, Sunday mornings. So I'd imagine that the bulk they're going to use will be in the morning time on Saturday and Sunday. So I don't foresee a ton of conflict. Um, but, uh, we'll work that out with the youth groups and move people around to make it happen.
Is this one of the fields the senior bay booth uses, right?
Uh, we have, the, the biggest group that we use is the, uh, the Gators. They're, uh, they're a local group, um, and we, we, they bounce around to the Bulge and Willett, so we can, we can shove.
Using the baseball field.
Yeah, so we can, we can work with them to get them other field.
It becomes a matter of schedule.
Yeah, it's just a matter of scheduling. We can work with them on that as well. But like I said, the cricket, the primary time they use the field is the morning, and that wouldn't be a conflict with baseball.
You said, you said you have about four cricket groups. What's a cricket group?
Uh, it's just a local group in town that uses.
No, I know, but are we talking five people? Are we talking 100 people?
No, you're, you're talking basically between 10 and 20 people, maybe even more. Um.
I don't want to see this interfere with the, with the baseball use.
Uh, it, it shouldn't. They, it's, it's just a multi-use field. Uh, they shouldn't have any impact on baseball. Um, and I can even clear it with the groups that do use that field on a regular basis to make sure as well.
You, just on that, Travis, I mean, I do, I do like the idea. In fact, I talked to Mr. Mizuko about it. They oftentimes play at the Lower Cleveland. We watched them play for years now on Saturday and Sunday mornings. I do, though, Mr. Plasko touches on something. We did install sprinklers out of that system a few years ago. It's a.
And we, we did work, I did work with Mark on starting this plan. The sprinkler layout does not affect the, the cricket pitch going in does not affect the sprinklers.
So how, how much, actually, this is a good point, though. How, how much use does that field get just from senior bay booth or any of the?
Not as much as Willett or Lower, or Bulge. Um, I mean, if.
Willett and, and, and Wilson.
Wilson Street. So there are multiple, multiple places that we can move them, that we can accommodate both cricket and baseball, I feel like, in my opinion.
But this field, for example, the Willett is a short field.
Yeah.
Tends distance. This, this is a.
Yeah, and unfortunately, the, the way the cricket pitch works out, if you, if you, if you, if you think about it from baseball, even football and cricket field, the cricket field, I think, is about 100, is, is much, much larger than a football field. And I don't have the square footage in front of me. I, I forgot to bring it tonight. I apologize. But, um, it was the only field, the Bulge baseball field is the only, one of the two that we could put it at. It's Lower Coakley or Bulge were the only two fields that they could use. That's an actual cricket pitch, because the pitch itself is, is massive.
Cricket is playing, it's, it's 360 degrees.
Yeah, so it's.
And that's what baseball does to the game. They, they, they put in the, the, the lines at right angles to indicate foul territory. But you take those out on a baseball field, you get 360 degrees.
Yeah, we tried the softball field at Bulge. We locked a couple other fields, but they just weren't big enough. This is one of the two, and I, I'm happy to talk to the other normal users of the field to make sure that they would be okay with the use, just to make sure we, our dot our i's and cross our t's and make sure that everybody's on board.
I see a group of followers doing it on Field Two on Sunday mornings.
Yeah, that was, that's one of our cricket groups. Uh, we've been trying to, um, and we're trying to find a home for them on the lower as well.
Well, this is pretty much how soccer started out in this town. It's a small group of people, and it's grown to what it is. So I really don't want to suppress.
No.
The cricket people. I want to.
No, we want to, we want to, we want to make a field that can be used for both baseball and, and cricket, that, that everybody can be happy to use.
But I, I think just, but to that point, Mr. Chairman, that, that's exactly why we're asking the questions about it, to make sure that if we do it, we do it right. I mean, they do plan multiple fields around town now. It's, it seems to be great.
Yeah.
It's just if we're going to find one, one field in particular, which is sort of like the home field or the, the main field, we want to make sure we, we, we get it done right. It's a, it's, I think it's a, it's a, it's a commitment. We want to make the commitment to do it right. Uh, so that's why we're asking questions about this choice of field as opposed to another one, or as opposed to any other solution we might have, but.
Yep. And we'll say, uh, Wilson Street, um, Lower Cleveland, uh, Lower Coakley seem to be, and Field Two seem to be the main areas where they, where they like to play.
Okay.
So.
Is that because of the size of the area?
Yeah, it's just the size of the field. It, and I wish I bought the square footage.
So Little, Little Lake Field is too small.
Too small. Uh, like Lower, the Bulge softball field was one field that I walked, because we thought lights, it doesn't get a ton of use. We use it for our softball league, um, but it was just way too small.
How about the, uh, I'm just, I'm just, we're just talking here.
Yeah.
I agree with you. I love the idea. I just, how about the field down at, um, at the end of Ellis Avenue there?
Yeah, that was, that one's too small, too.
Too small.
How about Doherty Field? I don't think that's how we use it. It's a, it's a big field, open area.
Doherty, we can look at that, yep.
Don't think that gets near with you, say, any of our other fields.
We could definitely look at that.
To the best of my knowledge, and maybe younger kids, I'm going to get here from that.
Well, you're always, unfortunately, always going to have that. There's groups that use everyone. Okay.
Mr. Folly, you had a question?
Yeah, just, um, I, I love the idea. Um, I think the Lower Coakley is probably the least used because of its size. It's mostly for the older kids and the senior bay booth, and that's probably the, the least used because of its size. So, um, but I'd like to suggest.
But they've argued for years that they didn't have appropriate fields, and I was talking about putting something, they're taking away from them.
Well. Again, I think it's a matter of scheduling now.
I think exactly that's what it is.
It's just to make sure that we are.
Scheduling a lot, now who's going to take precedence?
And it's not only about the scheduling, that the gentleman in front of us is the expert, and he's looked at everything, and this is his decision. And I think that we should support that decision.
So the, this one-page document that showed basic overall size in comparison to the playing field area, that, no dimensions, right? I mean, so we don't really.
Yeah, you don't, uh, I, like I said, I should have included that, but I apologize.
My only concern is more technical than anything else is if you look at the 11-by-17 drawing where you have the, where the cricket pitch would go, the distance between that sanded area and this infield, um, that's, that's going to cover a lot of this, and I'd be worried about how much.
We did, we did do it out with Mr. Ryan. It does fit in that field.
Okay.
Um, and the, the, the other good thing about the Lower Coakley is that they have the removable home run fence. Um, so that fence in there is not permanent. It's, it's something that you can take out and then use. If you wanted to use it for a cricket pitch after the baseball season ended, you could take out that fence, and then they can use, even, you could use even more space for cricket as well.
So not too much more.
Yeah, exactly. Not too much more.
The pitch itself is located basically in the middle of the whole field.
Exactly.
Okay, so you would, so you'd be using, you'd be using a lot of the infield here as well?
Correct.
Yeah.
And like I said, I'm happy to talk to the other, the user groups that we currently have, just to make sure that they wouldn't have a problem with the pitch being in center field. And if there's any objections, try to work with them in scheduling, um, for other fields as well.
So do we have a recommendation from the board at all to support this, uh, change locations?
Doesn't support you. We haven't got any firm. What do you want to know? You should spend time pursuing it?
I'm sorry, say it again.
What are you looking for? A hint, a hint that you should spend more time pursuing it? Because we don't have a, a firm recommendation because.
Yeah, you can, we can do that. I mean, if you, if you'd like, if you'd like me to give you some firm, um, as far as field dimensions, uh, make sure that there's no other user groups that are going to be affected.
You said you're going to check with other people, other fields. Couple of fields we're mentioning you're going to look into.
Okay.
But it seems like we're not necessarily settled on proposal tonight.
Okay, that's fine. I can check, I can check with them, and, uh, next time we meet, I will, um, have some firm information for you.
Thank you. Anything else from the board?
No, thank you.
Mr. Foley, anything from you?
That's it.
Oh, with that said, have a good evening, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Do you need anything from us on the holiday extravaganza?
No, just a vote. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Travis.
Uh, that concludes our appointments for the evening. So if we can, gentlemen, I'd like to get into, uh, new business. Number one, Noonner, N-O-O-N-E-R, LLC, doing business as Mc Morgan's, submitting application for common victor's license to operate at 434 Barstow Providence Highway. And if we remember, that's the restaurant attached to Hampton Inn. Do we have any questions?
You want a motion to approve?
I think the only thing that really, in my opinion, matters is that we have the approval of the, the building inspector, and that we have a.
Board of Health.
A sign-off from the Board of Health, and there's some banking information. But this is basically from Finn Bar Griffin, and he's been before us in the past. If anybody knows how to run a restaurant, it's Finn Bar Griffin. So I'll take a motion, if I could, to, uh, approve the application.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Right.
All opposed, unanimous. Number two, 2020 liquor licenses for approval, licenses for package stores, all alcoholic beverage, malt, wine and beer, in holders, and clubs for the year 2020. Signatures have been digitally scanned, and a list of licenses is attached. Approval of the board?
Information, I'm worried.
Chairman?
Approval, sorry.
Sir.
Did we, uh, increase the fees?
I suppose with the board of selectmen, we can do just about anything we.
Didn't we, didn't we vote a couple of years ago to increase all fees to an half percent every year automatically?
Okay, on that, what, what do we get in mind?
These prepared with current fees, or are the fees on?
Raised the fee in 2018.
I don't think we made it automatic, Bill, did we?
Thought we did. Thought we talked about it.
I would have voted against. May automatic?
I thought we did. I wouldn't swear to that, that's. But these are prepared with the current rate? We'll deal with them next year.
So do I take it, the following for motion to approve this?
Yes, sir.
Second.
And I have a second. All in favor to approve the 2020 license applications for liquor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number three, 2020 licenses for various issues here. We have an automatic amusement device license, class one, two, and three motor vehicle licenses, common victor's license, in holder license, jukebox license for weekdays, limousine licenses, lodging licenses, music and entertainment for weekdays and Sundays, taxi cab licenses, 24-hour permit opening application, uh, licenses, and additional hour permits. Motion from the board to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number four, Timothy J. McDonough, Chairman of the Board of Assessors, submitting request to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 4th, 2019, to determine the percentages of the FY 2020 tax levy.
Mine is our favorite, and I.
I dread it every year. I have a, I have a motion to approve.
Set hearing, motion to set hearing.
And I have a, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor? So on this Tuesday, December 4th, we'll be looking at, uh, percentages for the tax levy for 2020. Number five.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
The, the letter from Tim says.
But the letter says the second.
His letter says December 2nd.
December 3rd is the Tuesday for that week.
So. We both wrong.
First December and, first Tuesday in December, Mr. Chairman.
All right, somebody get a hat.
You're still going to have to be here, Mr. Chairman.
Whatever that Tuesday is.
First Tuesday in December.
We'll get that squared away. This is Marva Hill, and, uh, rectify that. There seems to be a question about the date of December 4th, 3rd, or 2nd. Maybe the Board of Assessors could pick one and formalize it with us. So other than the particular date, do we have a? So other than the particular date, do we have a?
Motion to set hearing.
What's that?
Motion to set the hearing.
Okay, I have a motion, a second to hear, set the date, uh, set the hearing.
Second.
And I have a second. All in favor, all opposed, unanimous. Mary Lou Follin, town clerk, submitting notice of resignation of Mrs. Deborah Henry from the Marl Memorial Library Board of Trustees.
Information?
Information at this time?
Mike?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Just indicate that further in the library's letter is the fact that they're accepting, uh, applications or resumes from people who might be interested. This position will, vacant position will be filled by appointment by the Board of Selectmen and the Memorial Library Trustees in a joint meeting. And people interested should send their letters of interest and resumes to the library trustees and/or this board. It might be best if they all go to one place, but if we get one, we can always send it over there. So anyone interested in taking a spot on the Library Board of Trustees, please get your applications in. What with?
Okay, just so, uh, make it perfectly clear. If you submit applications to this board, we'll look at them over and send them on to the Library Board of Trustees. Information?
So moved. Second.
And I have a second. All in favor, all opposed, unanimous. Number six, Thomas F. Branley, 40 Marlborough Street, submitting a request to place a banner on the poles on Washington Street between Vernon and Day. That's that large banner that goes across Washington Street at Day and Wash, highlighting the endistracted driving campaign. Motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I did speak to Mr. Branley earlier because he doesn't request when he would like that banner up. He was actually hoping that the legislation would have passed the state by now so that this would coincide, but that's going to be delayed. But he would still would like to put the banner up. Starting as soon as possible for three weeks if there's no other entity that has requested a scheduled banner placement.
Okay, I would ask Mrs. Marla Hill, maybe she could work with Mr. Branley and get an appropriate date and have that accomplished. So I have a motion to approve?
Second, yes, my motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, all opposed, unanimous. Number seven, Cigar Reese, the Board of Health Superintendent, submitting hazardous waste and recycling day report.
Motion to file.
On the, on the motion, we, we had 395 cars dropping off materials, some of them very hazardous materials, and we've collected over 53, close to $5,400 on disposal costs. So that's to the benefit of the town. But more so, I think the benefit is to the homeowners that get these hazardous waste materials out of their home. So their children or grandchildren don't get into trouble with all these chemicals in their basement. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor to accept?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number eight, John D. Atia Esquire of McDermott Quilly and Miller LLP, submitting request for a change of LLC manager for Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC, doing business as Chipotle Mexican Grill located at 1415 Providence Highway.
Approval? Do we need a legal hearing?
No, we're not needed.
No, we've kind of done away with that.
Okay.
So I have a motion to, sir?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed, unanimous. Number nine, Val Swi, uh, Feeny, rather, Val Feeny of the Northern Irish Music Club, submitting request for one day all alcoholic beverage license on Saturday, October 19th, 2019, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM at the Northern Knights of Columbus for their monthly dance.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number 10, Venus Barbosa, 35 Rockdale Street in Boston, submitting request for a one day wine malt beverage license on Sunday, November 10th, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM at Winsmith Mill Market located at 61 Endicott Street, Building 24, fourth floor. Any questions from the board? Motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Going once, going twice?
I'll second it.
What's that?
I'll, I'll second it for discussion. I just have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, on that, on that motion?
Is this, um, fourth floor of 61 Endicott Street, Building 24, that, that typical?
We've done it up there before. They have, you know, the secondhand clothing or furniture or whatever it might be, and every so often, somebody has a function up there.
Okay.
I think just recently they had one outdoors, if I remember correctly, also.
Yeah, remember that one, yes.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Jose Amerim, Northern Portuguese Club, 1090 Washington Street, semester, submitting request for a one day wine and malt beverage license on Saturday, October 26th, from 12:00 to 11:00 PM.
Tom, move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, all opposed, unanimous. Number 12, Cemetery Deeds, for review and the signature of the board. I have three different lots, motion? Motion to sign? And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number 13, Robert F. Sullivan, Sr., manager for Xfinity, submitting notice regarding Xfinity TV channel updates.
Information filed?
Information to file, and I have a second. All in favor? All opposed, unanimous. 14, Masha Marta of 47 Windsor Road, submitting petition to the board regarding traffic concerns in the Windsor Road area. Questions from the board on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I had it on my list for a selectman's agenda, but I think maybe a couple of months back, Tony might have submitted a letter to the board for consideration of composing a different safety group on how we would review these. I suggest that we look at that at an upcoming meeting first before, you know, because this is actually, the request is pretty detailed about what they're looking for. And I think we want to make sure that we're asking the committee to do what we want them to do, not just for this particular instance, but going forward so that we're not treating them all differently.
Right, so your suggestion is to pass it on to the pedestrian safety committee?
No, I'm asking that we approve or review what Tony submitted a couple of months ago, which was a recomposition of the safe, the safety committee.
Traffic Safety Committee, right?
Yes.
Right.
Will it out in two weeks?
Yeah, I mean, the memo, I can reset the board the same memo. I, the chairman and I have spoken that we assumed we'd be operating under that model where you would have a traffic safety committee, not just pedestrian safety, and that you would send your recommendations or requests for changes to traffic pattern to them. They would review it and get a recommendation to the board, just to make sure that you're hearing from public safety and school facilities and.
Correct, and they're all on that particular board amongst others. So the recommendation is to put it off?
Well, I would like us to go through and then for the board to actually approve it.
When it comes back to us?
Yes.
Yes, that's exactly where I'm going.
Thank you.
So the motion would be to send it off to the traffic safety committee, at which time they will review it, make recommendations. No?
I'm requesting that we review Tony's recommendation and approve that first before we send this off to whatever committee we have named it to.
Mr. Manager, you'll give that to us next week?
Sure, you'll have it for next week.
Is that me?
Everybody good with that?
I thought we already approved it.
I thought we did too.
I thought we did.
I thought we already told the manager to go ahead and set it up.
I did as well, but if you'd like another formal.
We have given you things in the past.
Do you have a traffic safety committee now?
Yes, it's, it's based on the memo that you had sent before. So if you want to formally, a memo I had sent the board before, if you want to formally bless it, you can do that if you would.
Would you be kind enough to tell us who's on the committee?
It's the School Facilities Director.
Mr. Cattie.
Uh, yep, the Police Safety Officer, representative from the Fire Department, as well as the Town Engineer and the Director of Public Works. So that way you have all of your individuals related to traffic and safety concerns sitting at a table reviewing.
And that committee exists now?
That was my understanding.
I thought we did.
I don't think so. But I, I don't want to stand in the way of progress over that, but I did have questions about process. What he explained in his memo, I was looking for a little bit more information about what we're asking the, them to do and what information we would want to see when they're making their recommendations. So mine is process related. It's not meant to hold up anything, but I don't recall ever actually approving it. I remember receiving his memo outlining it, but that could just be.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I move that we request the manager to send us that information again, that we discuss it next week and take action the following week.
Well, you and the manager won't be here next week, so.
Table for two weeks.
All right, sure.
Second, I'll second that motion.
Okay, the residents apparently will have to, Windsor Road will apparently have to wait two weeks. And at that time, we'll just move it on to another group. So it'll be a period of time. By then, there'll be 10 feet of snow on the ground and there will be no traffic issue. Okay, I get it. Okay, do I have a motion to put it off for two weeks?
Table for two weeks.
And a second on that?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to postpone this discussion for two weeks until we have further information. All in favor? All opposed, unanimous.
Now the man can go on vacation.
Number 15, Dennis Kylie, co-chair of Northern Cultural Council, submitting request for Mary Paz, P-A-Z, 25 Heaton Avenue, to be appointed to the Cultural couple, council, I'm sorry, cultural council for a three-year term. Anything from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I'm going to make a motion that we, that we appoint Mary Paz to the Northern Cultural Council. I can tell you that Denise Kylie, as you see here, did send a, did send an email to this office indicating that Kelly Hodson and Michelle, Michelle O'Leary, I think, have decided not to come back. And of course, Kelly Artemonov was already notified as that she wouldn't be coming back. So there are, there are now three vacancies, or there are three fewer members. Our obligation is to have between five and nine members on that committee. With these three departing, we would have six or five. Anyway, five or six. So there's room for at least one more, and I propose that we, that we appoint Mary Paz in accordance with her request and that of Denise Kylie. I do know Mary Paz. She spoke to me personally about this. I know she has the endorsement of the rest of the cultural council. I think she'd be a great fit for that board.
Second.
Oh, that motion, Mr. Haja?
On the motion, so I have no objection to individuals. I think it's great that when people come to us wanting to do public service, but I think I talked this early when I joined the board is that when the board voted a couple of years ago to at least have the person wanting to be appointed to a particular board, that is new, not one going from one board to another or someone that's being reappointed, but a new one would at least come to us at a meeting for just a 10-minute introduction, tell us your background, what you want to do with this particular position, blah, blah, blah. So this is nothing against this individual. She's definitely qualified, but if the board voted to do something, then either we should do it or just say we're not going to do interviews. I personally think it's a good idea to look someone in the eyes and introduce themselves and welcome them, because more likely than not, they're going to be approved. But the last time we did this was with somebody who backed out, if you remember. We had scheduled them to come in to interview and then, and they backed out. We don't know why. But I would suggest we stick to it or just say we're not going to do interviews anymore because we can't say one thing and then do another.
I think we've already skipped some other people that we've reappointed, but then again.
Not reappointed, I'm talking new.
Then I think it's, we run into the problem of familiarity. I may know the person, Tom may know the person, but we don't realize that you don't know the person. So it's not a bad practice.
No, no, no.
Make a motion, I'll second.
I approve that. So would you change our motion?
Rather than a motion to approve the, or to approve this person's, invite her in to talk to us about her request. Is that fair?
Second.
I have a motion to invite the particular individual in for an interview, and I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Moving right along, Joseph Collins, Joseph A. Collins, General Manager's Office, submitting for approval of the board fuel efficiency vehicle policy, Green Communities designation criteria four. Mr. Manager, would you like to define that for us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As part of the Green Communities program that the town's been working towards for several months, we're required to adopt a fuel efficient vehicle policy. And really, what the Commonwealth states is that they want cities and towns participating in the program and receiving grant funds to purchase fuel efficient vehicles when they're commercially available and when the town is part of a regular replacement plan and the vehicle otherwise makes commercial sense. So we're not required to go out and replace any vehicles, this portion of the, at this time, so we don't have to take a perfectly good vehicle and buy anything new. What this policy was really designed for, it applies to the town in Aurora, of course, but there's a lot of towns out there that use a lot of pool vehicles for inspectors, assessors, parking enforcement. We don't do that generally. The way we handle vehicles for most of those positions is the employees pay a stipend, they use their own vehicle. So there's very few vehicles that we own in the town fleet that would actually, the policy would apply to. Anything over 8,500 pounds is a categorical exemption. Everything else, it's just that you buy a fuel efficient vehicle if one is commercially available. So if we need a pickup truck, there's no, that happens to be just under the 8,500 pounds, there's not a commercially available, fuel efficient vehicle usually there. So that's why most public works and light department vehicles are exempt. As you know, the light department, sorry, the Fire Department rarely has a small vehicle. The police fleet, there may be a commercially viable hybrid option coming out. We've purchased, we're going to purchase a few of them for this year to test out that Explorer model. We may convert the fleet over. We're going to wait and see what happens. It, it's been pursuit rated by the Michigan State Police, who rates police vehicles, but it hasn't actually been tested in the field yet. So we'd be converting the fleet over to Explorers anyway, but it's just when they're commercially available and it makes sense to do so. But again, there are towns that have 10, 15 pool cars for assessors and inspectors. We don't, so the net impact to us of this would be minimal until more fuel efficient vehicles come on the markets for the type of work that we do.
You talked about the Michigan State Police. Usually, whatever they do, the rest of the country follows suit.
Generally. So we think we could see in four or five years, a police fleet that's entirely hybrids. We just haven't gotten the vehicles in and tested them yet.
And we talk hybrid, we're talking about someone that's very fuel efficient. We're not talking about solar powered police cars.
Correct.
That break down at 4:00 in the morning.
Correct. That's why the state said they have to be commercially available and viable is actually the other part of the requirement, that, you know, you're not, we're not going out buying any helicopters or anything crazy like that that hasn't been tested. So at some point in time, there might be a battery powered or a pickup truck that the cemetery crew could use. They're, they're not out there yet, commercially viable and widely used.
Are they more expensive?
Sometimes they are. So the, the Explorers that we're looking to purchase are going to be more expensive, but we're looking to save on the maintenance costs in that particular case. It depends on what you're using the vehicle for.
How do you save on maintenance costs?
Part of it's the model. The Chargers are just not necessarily designed for use in the Northeast. They're bottoming out a lot of times. They just have not proven to be a cost effective police vehicle. So we feel that upgrading or changing the fleet over at a minimum will end up saving us some money. The idea is that the hybrids actually have less wear and tear on the engine and you should save more in time on maintenance.
I understand moving away from the Dodge. That I understand.
Correct.
I'm talking about the Ford presumably will offer you a gasoline powered and a hybrid model. Why would I choose the hybrid over the gasoline?
So beyond the environmental benefits is the fuel savings that should, we should end up seeing. Remember, we do spend a lot of money on fuel. And less wear and tear on certain engine parts generally lets them last a little bit longer. Now, that may not end up being a savings we realistically see because we beat the vehicles up so much that we have a four-year rotation schedule. I mean, we're hitting that replacement time a lot faster than a residential vehicle is out there on the residential market.
So the, the vehicle, the vehicle itself costs more than the gasoline power. The hybrid costs more, is that right?
Generally, yes.
So, so your, your, whatever maintenance savings you're getting are probably overwhelmed by the piece cost. All right, and we, we, you said we're already planning to buy some of these, right?
For, we're going to experiment with them, if you will, for this round of our fleet purchase for the police department. The amount of.
Three?
Three. The amount of, possibly four. The amount of fuel that you put a police cruiser through makes it a good model to test that because we drive those vehicles quite a bit. The cars, after three or four years, when they're getting cycled out, they have 70, 80, 90,000 miles on them. So in theory, that's where you're going to see the gas savings. You may think you'd see it in a DPW truck, but those vehicles generally aren't on regular patrol. They're going from work site to work site. So you should see the fleet fuel savings in the police fleet. And the light department has looked at, there are actually trucks out there that can be electric trucks, and you would think it'd be great that our light department, you know, our electric company can have electric powered trucks. The problem is they don't stand up to, the battery charge doesn't last when they actually have to deploy and have their stabilizers out and be working on them. So the last thing you want is in the middle of a storm, the vehicle runs out of power when it's trying, you know, somebody's trying to go open a bucket truck. So there may come a time in a couple of years where those are more commercially available and they're more market viable, and we'd look at that. Until then, the state's not pushing anyone too hard with this. It's just when they're commercially available, when they're viable, they like to get fuel efficient. And fuel efficient doesn't have to be a hybrid. It could just be that if you're buying a vehicle and there happens to be, there's a certain MPG that they want you to pick if it's commercially available.
Just, so, we, first of all, the four vehicles that we're planning to buy this year, we budgeted for them in the capital budget. Do we, are we covered?
It's in the operating budget for the police.
Yeah, but are we covered?
Yes. So what do you mean by are we covered?
Did we budget enough?
Have we budgeted enough?
Oh, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Haja, sir?
Just two questions. One is, to Tom's point, I presume that there's a cost analysis that's done to say that the manufacturer would be able to provide you or the Michigan department would be able to tell you.
Oh, sure. They always provide you something saying you're going to save money. We're, we're going to experiment and see on our own if we're actually going to save money.
Well, to Tom's point about the gas, so into yours, if we're going to use, you know, 25% less gas, lean, we know how many miles we're going, we could determine what those potential savings are to see, you know, and then compare that to the price increase of the vehicle on an annual basis.
Well, the other thing, David, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the other thing too is that we cycle them every three or four years anyway. So it's not, we do a lot of mileage, but.
High miles.
But regardless of, of the condition of the car after three or four years, we're taking them out. We just will, you know, on schedule. So it's not, it's not like, I don't, I'd want to see just how much actual maintenance would be saving on it since we, once we get up into the high mileage, they're gone. But, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, that's true, but I think as the Chargers has proven, we're spending much more on maintenance, even in the 40,000 to 50,000 mile range than you would have expected from a police vehicle that we typically purchase in the past.
Right, we're planning on going to Explorers one way or another. What we said is let's take a look at if the hybrids end up being better or not. We want to run them for three, six months and see if they're actually, not just the fuel savings, but are they proving to be more reliable? They're supposed to be. But again, the Michigan State Police is the entity that always rates vehicles, police vehicles for pursuit rated, to be pursuit rated. They've rated these. There are departments around the country that are ordering them. There's other departments in the state that have ordered them. And we don't commit our fleet out five or six years anyway, but we're going to get a few in this year and see if we think they're working. We're going to see a decrease in the maintenance costs, we feel, no matter what, just because we are seeing high maintenance costs on the Chargers.
Yeah.
And probably fuel cost over the long term.
Right. The benefit to the town irrespective of Green Communities of switching to the Explorers too, is that they do become hand-me-downs that other departments can tend to use. If we ever did want pool vehicles to switch over, some of the inspectors' vehicles from paying a stipend to that, or sometimes the rec department, DPW has spare vehicles that they'll use. Currently, the Dodge Chargers, I mean, we can't just pass off a used Dodge Charger to the building inspector to go out and do building inspections in. It wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily work that well, but we're hopeful that these might save money down the road and sort of have a second life as vehicles in the town.
My second question, Mr. Chairman, was.
Sir?
The, the background talks about the Board of Selectmen and School Committee must adopt. Are they, have they been requested to adopt this exact same policy?
Correct.
Okay.
Have they addressed it yet? Or they, or they, or they meet every two weeks, that's right.
Yeah, it came up at their meeting, and I think the superintendent just had a couple of questions, so he kicked it off to their following meeting.
We seem to be very good at that, kicking things off.
That, that is the, that is the norm sometimes. There are concerns too, similar, we're not required to go out and purchase new school vans. There aren't, to my knowledge, eight passenger special ed vans that are hybrids or fuel efficient. You're just, they're not commercially available. The state, again, has always taken a very sort of gloved approach to the Green Communities program and said, where you can make progress, make progress, when it makes sense to do so.
So what you need tonight is approval and signature for this policy so that we now fulfill criterion four.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve that particular policy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. And moving right along to number 17, Jeff McLean, New England location, looking to request a commercially filmed note, but that has been withdrawn. They're going to another location, so we can disregard number 17 altogether. Which brings us to unfinished business. Number one, the ABCC submitting a, submitting final approval of retail all-alcoholic beverage for BTN Inc., doing business as the Boston Tavern, who operated 12, is 1210 Boston Province Turnpike. So that particular license has been approved by the ABCC.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
If I could, I just, I had heard a rumor, somebody mentioned to me that that business wasn't going in there, but they just pulled their building permit this week, so.
They're doing a lot of renovation down there.
Pretty substantial renovation for just an interior renovation that's already set up as a restaurant.
I think when the gentleman came before us, this is not his first time at the rodeo.
Sure.
He's got other entities also. He expected a on-or-about Christmas time opening.
Correct. I just, I wanted to just address it mainly for the community, more than anything. Somebody mentioned that to me, I think more than one person said, hey, I heard that Boston Tavern wasn't going into the old-
That was the original concept. It was all set, then they pulled out, then they came back.
Correct. But they are moving forward.
Yes, sir. Number, letter B, submitting final approval for change of manager application for Grand Slam Restaurant Concepts, Norwood LLC, doing business at Jake &amp; Joe's, from Gerard Di Puggerio to Sonia Ramos. And C, submitting final approval for a change of manager application for Two Beirut Inc., doing business as Two Beirut, from Irene Mamadidis to Sammy Kelfer.
Motion to file's information, A, B, and C.
I have a motion and a second, I believe.
Yep.
All in favor, all opposed, unanimous. Under memoranda, submitting his monthly report, Building Inspector Mark Schubert, for September of 2019.
Information file.
Motion to file, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, all opposed, unanimous. Which brings us to the managers' update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If NCM could just pop an image up on the screen, give them just a moment to get it up there. This image was taken at the pumpkin float this summer, this past weekend, as part of our Fall Fest that the rec department did a fantastic job on. I did attend the pumpkin float. Wonderful, wonderful event. You can see the pumpkins floating across the pond with the trees and the colors coming in the background. It was a great time. They had bonfires and kids were making s'mores and some bounce houses. It was a wonderful, wonderful, that's the pond right behind-
Was it a race?
No, it was just, they sort of float across slowly. You put them all out there to get the image of all the pumpkins floating on there, and they were mostly lit up. So it was just a wonderful, wonderful community event. Kudos to the rec department for combining a lot of existing events and creating some new events, and I guess the Fall Fest weekend was a huge, huge success. But in particular, the pumpkin float was a wonderful, wonderful community event.
Guess you liked it.
I had a great time.
Thank you.
I'll leave it at that. That's all I have for you, Mr. Chairman. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions for the managers this evening?
No, the picture told the whole story.
And if you turn it upside down, it looks almost as good.
It does.
We have the selectmen's agenda coming up next. Mr. Maloney?
Glad you're back, Mr. Chairman. Hope you, I know you had a nice time. It was wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Plasko?
Ditto.
Ditto. We're rolling on here. Mr. Hajah?
Not too fast, I'm sorry. Did we miss something from Travis requesting the closure of Central Street?
Yeah, we didn't formally vote on that. He did mention it briefly, but-
I don't think, did we vote on it?
No, we did not.
Okay, yeah.
So, move to approve the request for the closure of Central Street-
Second.
On November 23rd, from 6, 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m.
I have a motion to approve that request, and I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous.
And then Bernie's memo regarding, okay, never mind, is that for the shoot?
I believe that was the one that was withdrawn.
That was withdrawn. They've gone to another location to do that filming.
Okay. Just a couple things. I did go to the DLS All Day Seminar. It was also attended by Molly and Tom McQuade. The only thing that was of particular, there was a lot of good information, which I have filed with Christine, Christina, if anyone wants to read the information. There were a lot of court cases they talked about regarding taxes and other issues that were interesting. But the workshop that I went to had to do with separation of duties, and that was really pertaining to when, when if we ever got into discussions with other towns for consolidation of services, like, you know, a conservation agent or an animal director or something like that. You know, you pick something small that you might find a neighboring town that is willing to share the cost and responsibility, rather than every town have their own. They continue to encourage towns to at least look at it, pick something small that you are willing to discuss. But they talked about the different types of agreements that towns have had, and that, you know, how you should be careful about what's in it, make sure you've dotted all your i's and crossed your t's. They gave an example where two towns had talked about doing a, for their trash composition in one town, another town joined them, where they jointly operated it and shared the cost, and it was cheaper for both towns. But then one town had an emergency and they needed to divert some trucks from the composition center to the town, and the director of the collective teams from the town said no, and they ended up going to court. And their document, the way it was written, didn't allow for that. It was up to this body that they appointed to make that decision. And, you know, the point was, be careful what you look at, but look at it and be thorough and ask for the DLS's help when doing that. So that's my contribution for that. In the Beacon, it talked several things about local aid, but it talked about cybersecurity and that there are grants out there available to look at, and I'm hoping that our team is looking at that stuff, too, because they really talked about the cyber threats that are continuously, continuously coming to each state. And that as we keep changing systems and all that, it's ripe for making sure that we have cybersecurity on our mind, and that you can't ignore it, because I know you've all heard of teams and companies being held up for ransom and having to pay for it, because there's no other way, no other way to do it. So you want to make sure you're ahead of this and not behind it. And the other one was, I think Tony already talked about, a question came up about Chapter 90, and I think we'll get some additional funding for the, for next spring. The state is now considering a statewide plastic bag ban, which is now before the House Committee. This would take away from each cities and town that has been trying to do it on their own. So we'll see where that goes. I'm not sure the Senate has that well, but I know the House probably will pass it.
How long does it take them to get even close to a hands-free bill in the Congress?
It's terrible. So there are, there are more than 100 towns in the state that have a plastic bag ban, so it's probably worth the state to make sure that they do something, rather than wait on everybody else. And with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more?
Go ahead.
I did, can we talk about at some future meeting, the formalization of the St. Lots that we may be purchasing at town meeting? They're not, I know it's sort of informal down there, but the roadway that connects St., is it St. Joe's to, I mean, St. Paul to St. John's? It's not a formal road, and it's an unnamed sort of pathway. And I'm thinking, you know, five trucks go down there, there's no way, you're not going to have them just turn around and come back up, because there's no way to do that. It does benefit us in the long run to have roadways on our books, rather than just having dirt, roadways and not conging them anything. Didn't know if it was something to have maybe a markbook act to see what we would have to do to make it an official road and whether it's worth, because it would account towards our miles for Chapter 90 purposes. I know it's a small thing, but if we're going to adopt those roadways, well, that end of it is part of this.
There's a formal acceptance process that includes town meeting. But I think we'd have to ask them to look at it to guide us, because I think some of that property is going to actually be in, where the road is now, will actually be in the hands of the Conservation Commission once we purchase it.
So there's two things. There's that, and we should wait for the, part of the approval process was design money, so we should wait for the design to come back to see what they're looking at it for. Second of all, to accept the road, and there are times that we do accept roads, we do have standards that they have to be built up to. So if we were then to have to build that up to our standards, I don't know if there would necessarily be a value there. We might be able to maintain access for the fire department without having to bring it up. As David said, the, any roads that are formally accepted get added to our Chapter 90 numbers. However, to bring that piece of stretch up to drivable standards that the state would accept it into our Chapter 90 pool, you'd probably be looking at a couple hundred grand to get an extra $5,000 in Chapter 90, when you would never necessarily make it back. But we can probably address the concerns about making sure there's public safety clearance without having to bring the road up to drivable standards.
Some kind of a minimal standard.
Correct. But we're going to want to wait until we get some design back and have an idea of what exactly it looks like. There may be parking at the conscom, it's not necessarily the conscom's decision, it'll be conservation of land, per se. There may be parking that we want to put in, but I think maintaining access for public safety will be important.
Is that something we can convey to the Conservation Commissioners by the design?
I don't believe they're, they're not going to be in control, so to speak, of the design of the property.
The CPA.
Yeah, it's permanently conserved, but we'll have to, we'll have to see.
Okay. Well, you know what's on our radar, so any discussions, you keep that in mind.
Will do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Thank you both. All right, I just want to make a, a couple of quick announcements that we can. This coming Tuesday, at the seniors' high school, is the continuation of the special town meeting, and that'll start at 7:30.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Did I say Tuesday?
You did.
I'm sorry. Thursday, this coming Thursday.
That was the result of the confusion last week.
Apparently, we didn't get a quorum this last time, this past, we made it at Temple,